Today is a special commission meeting, tentative budget hearing for 2017, 2018. Today is Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017, at 7:45. For the pledge, can we all rise, please? Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't see it over here on the agenda, but I think for the invocation, Ms. Aguilar, do you mind?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually for special commission meetings, the invocation is not part of the agenda, but I believe in light of what...
I think today is a special day.
I think so, too. Please rise.
Let's rise.
And tonight I have the privilege to ask God to spare us from the wrath of this horrific hurricane that is knocking on our door. We pray for all the residents in the state of Florida and those that are in the path of Hurricane Irma. May somehow you find in your will, your infinite wisdom, to make it better for all the residents, to bring calm to the community when there is a state of despair at this time. We ask you to protect all the residents of the city of West Miami, our leaders, so that they can govern for the greater good of the community. We ask you to protect our police officers and firefighters that will be out there protecting us while we ride the storm in our homes, to ensure that there is peace, safety, and for the well-being of the community, protecting life and property. We ask this from the bottom of our hearts. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Yolanda Rodriguez.
Present.
And Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to take a point, I mean, a privilege, to just say a few words, and I'll be very quick. This morning, the city manager, along with Police Department, Public Works, and so on, we got together in preparation for what it seems to be a pretty powerful storm named Irma. And we are concerned, and rest assured that the city of West Miami has taken all precautions to, for whatever is coming. And all I can say is, we got to prepare for the worst, but actually hope for the best. And in that item, I mean, in that thought, I wanted to actually thank somebody that is here tonight, Ralph Oreyes. He's a city resident, and he has graciously donated a truck of load of sand and a thousand bags. We are looking for volunteer to assist bagging the sandbags tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. Thank you. All we need is a release of liability signed by the volunteers. I want to personally thank Mr. Oreyes on behalf of the city, on behalf of the residents, on behalf of this commission, for your gracious action. Thank you. And with that, you know, let's move on to the meeting, and let's take item number three.
Item number three, citizen presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Unless, Madam Clerk, you suggest an item to take out of order, I would like to follow the order of the agenda. Any items that we should take out of order? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if you will allow me to, I'd like to just report on the hurricane preparedness for the benefit of the city. Although we have a public hearing advertised on the tentative city budget, I just wanted a record to reflect what we've done in your presence and at your request this morning at 10:00 a.m., so if you allow me to do that, we can get that out of the way.
Please do.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Commission, this morning, as the mayor informed you, we met at 10 o'clock in the morning in an effort to revisit our storm preparations for what appears to be an imminent impact as a result of Hurricane Irma. Department directors have been asked to make their pre-storm department preparations and post-storm relief and recovery efforts. Thankfully, most of us who were here during Hurricane Andrew are still with the city, and those of us who were not here have brought experience from other municipalities in dealings with storms. So I guarantee you, you have the best team and the best combination in any city of Miami-Dade County. I guarantee you that all departments are tracking the storm and ensuring pre-storm services, to include garbage and trash collection, street sweeping, which I am not sure whether tomorrow, Mr. Penna, street sweeping citywide will be done tomorrow, because this helps with allowing the water to go into the drains without the leave accumulation on the side of the streets. We are taking care, our police department is working with EOC and following their protocol. Our chief and deputy chief have canceled all planned vacation and absences. We are on 12-hour shifts. We have equipment ready to go, so police officers will be out on the road until such time it is not safe for them to be out on the road. Community center meals for the elderly. Marilyn Mariah and I have been in conversation since yesterday afternoon. She has been working with the caterers to ensure that her seniors have enough food to take them through the brunt of the storm until we have an opportunity to assess the damage and what occurs, or what Irma leaves behind. We have worked with the park director, who has his readiness plan in place, and our closures, and also, we are ensuring that our employees have time to secure their homes without interrupting service to the city. It should be noted, and at the writing of this memo, the issue of sandbags that Mr. Oreyes has donated to the city was not contemplated. Now, this statement is off the table, because now we have, you know, we have this wonderful donation. It should be noted that our honorable governor of the state of Florida, Rick Scott, has asked everybody emphatically, instructed all the residents of Miami-Dade County to basically put their hurricane plans into effect. This means that residents are urged to purchase their water, their batteries, and non-perishable items, their Pampers, baby formulas, medicines, and any other recommendations as issued by Miami-Dade County Office of Emergency Management. All essential employees will be asked to report to work until such time EOC makes the announcement, which they have already. All government offices for non-essential employees will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week until further notice. Post-storm efforts will commence as soon as it is safe for employees to return to work. We've asked all department directors to have contact information ready, so that we can call our employees back on a as-need basis. And the goal of the city is to make sure that our debris and the safety and the welfare of the residents are first and foremost, the most important things we address first. I will be here as long as I possibly can. I don't have to commute a long time, so most certainly, again, I am totally committed to the city, and to the residents, and to the mayor, and the City Commission members for as long it is safe for us to be out. I hope your family is safe, and we pray for the storm to go away. That being said, I don't know if anybody has any further questions regarding storm preparations.
Any questions for the manager?
I'm sorry, did you mention, are we going to have garbage collection on Thursday?
We will have garbage collection for as long as EOC determines that it is unsafe for us to be out there. We have to allow employees time, not only to collect the garbage and trash that is in the swale, everything we can possibly pick up, but we have to allow them time to safely travel to their destination, wherever they're going to ride out the storm. So we will have that into consideration. We'll be, I mean, now is not the time to tell people, "Clean up your backyard." Now it's the time to hunker down and collect everything, maybe put it inside your garage or in a safe place in your property, and then after the storm, we'll be out picking up. Am I correct, Mr. Penna? That's pretty much the protocol we've asked them. I know that a lot of people go, get very nervous, and they take their entire yard and put it in the front right now. I think they need to prepare themselves, food, medicines, what I've mentioned before, and then after the storm, we will be out there clearing. As you know, we were the first city to have our streets cleaned after Hurricane Andrew, after Wilma, after Katrina, and so we have, we have all the resources available, but right now, I would urge the residents of the city to take care of themselves first and ride out the storm. We will be out there for them as soon as it's safe to come out and start picking up and collecting.
Now, I have a, Yolanda, in other words, we will do according with the county.
Exactly.
If the county works, if the county takes the trash out, we will...
We, I would recommend that we follow their protocol.
We follow their protocol, okay.
Yes.
That's the way.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Again, Madam Clerk, any item, perhaps item F?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more item.
Okay.
If you could consider opening the public hearing on the tentative budget, because it was advertised for 7:30 as a public hearing, open it and continue it to a time certain tonight, following other items that I think we should take out of order.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Can you read it into the record?
Item, yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4C is the public hearing on the tentative city budget for fiscal year 2017-18, all city funds by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. At this time, we open the public hearing. We close it to a time certain tonight, and can you read item F, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4F, presentation of insurance renewal by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and recommendation by the office of the city manager in reference to renewal of the city's medical vision prescription insurance program for 2017-18 fiscal year with the FMIT by city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this evening, we're fortunate to have Representative of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, Director of Trust Services, Clay Austin. Thank you, Clay, for being here tonight, in light of what we're all going to be facing in the next couple days. And Lindsay, who is, Lindsay, if you remember, Aaron Carper, Aaron has moved up, and so he is following, he's right behind Clay, and Lindsay will be the new representative to the city of West Miami assigned to our medical insurance program. Clay is now the Director of Trust Services, and we have been working with him for the last three or four years.
You've known me for over 10 years.
Well, I've known you for 10 years. But the city has had the medical insurance program. We moved it from a self-funded plan about four years ago, more or less five years ago? More? Time flies. Okay. So we moved the program into a fully insured PPO program that is administered by the Florida League of Cities. So with that said, I would encourage you to hear from Clay, and then I'll come back to you and talk to you about our budget contemplations and our deliberations based on the renewal.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, and first of all, thank you all for your service here. It takes a lot to be an elected official, and it takes a very good staff behind you, obviously.
Absolutely.
You'll have a second to non-staff, and I mean that so much so that we've used Yolanda for commercials, by the way. She does a really good job, so her face was featured prominently at the Florida League of Cities Conference this year. It's been about, it's been six years. It's been six years. So y'all had come from, just a little history, y'all had come from a self-funded program. Yolanda had her staff reach out to us to see if we were able to help y'all and get y'all through the league's programs. At the time, it financially made sense for y'all to do that. If you go year on year, you were looking at increases in the double-digit areas for quite a long time. Since you have been with us, we have stayed below that. Actually, this year, you're at about a 5.9% increase. The trend in the state of Florida is about eight and a half, so every time, we stay below healthcare trend is always a win for the municipality. Y'all do have a lot of services that are offered through the Florida League of Cities, through the trust. A lot of your employees have taken advantage of those over the years, in terms of them even dealing with something that could be a catastrophic event with themselves, and just taking care of them through treatment and just being a person to hold their hand. We put programs in place like that about three years ago. You've had some people that have had some very good stories come out of here without sharing too much, but you've had some good stories come out of here that you've had some people helped. To kind of end this thing, we, I would suggest, too, and we're going across the whole state telling people this, with the hurricane coming, just know that the league is here for y'all. We are stationing some support through South Florida right now to take care of our members, and the most important thing, just take care of yourselves and take care of each other, too, as this comes through, because we're pretty convinced it's going to be, it's going to be an event here. We're just going to pray that it's not catastrophic, so.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? I'd be willing to answer them.
Any questions for Clay?
Well, yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you spell your name for me?
Clay, C-L-A-Y.
Clay, like the Boneyan clay?
Like the, like the...
No, no, that's Clay.
Like the dirt, like Clay, C-L-A-Y.
Clay, okay, nice.
Yes, sir.
And you have a very smart face. You have a smart face.
Thank you.
So I like, I like the way you present to us.
Thank you.
But I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can you introduce her, too?
Oh, yes, sorry. This is Lindsay Larson. She's going to be...
Lindsay.
Yes. Lindsay Larson. She'll be your new account executive, so she will be dealing with the day-to-day, the day-to-day services on the health insurance side for the city of West Miami. She's, her background is health promotion, so she was a wellness coordinator. A lot of the stuff that we do, we do health promotion first, and y'all have got some programs in here internally that she will be helping with to get that off the ground.
So I have another question. May I keep in my mind Lindsay and Clay? So I remember both of you? Sounds good. Lindsay and Clay. So good, very well.
We work together.
Perfect, perfect. Now I remember you, the, our insurance people. Very well. Lindsay and Clay, good, very smart face, you two. Yeah, she's pretty and smart. I can see that. Thank you very much. For me, I'm very happy with you.
We had an upgrade from Aaron. We had an upgrade from Aaron.
Poor Aaron.
He's not even here, can't even defend himself, but yeah, I agree.
We liked Aaron.
He's a good, he's a good.
And he's not here to defend himself, so.
No, but I'll let him know.
Yes, and Mayor and members of City Commission, I worked with Lindsay for quite some years already. She was in charge of the wellness program, and I can assure you that we are in good hands. She's very professional.
Very responsive.
Yes, and very responsible.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add, we have already taken into account the rising cost of medical insurance. Obviously, we are at a level where perhaps soon, sometime in the near future, we're going to have to start addressing perhaps some coverage issue, and maybe in coming years, shift a little bit more of the financial burden to dependent coverage. We have to deal with affordable healthcare, and I know there's changes that I know are affecting or driving costs up. They're affecting it at the payroll services level, because obviously, our payroll vendor, which is ADP, also has to comply with ACA, and there are some changes that I know have been discussed in Washington, and no real changes have come about yet, but we can't lose sight of the fact that this is going to be something that is going to be impacting our insurance moving forward, in a good way or in an uncertain way. So that being said, your budget contemplates the increases as proposed, and I highly recommend that we stay with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. They provide excellent benefits in the scheme of things, and I think we're all in a good place as far as medical coverage to our employees and their insured dependents.
Thank you.
Very well.
Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary renewal documents for the purpose of renewing the city's medical prescription vision care program as part of the FMIT, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, providing for budget inclusion that contemplates any and all expected costs to fund the insurance program, providing for open enrollment and providing for effective date. Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Before I call for a motion, do we have any further question, anything else, Ms. Aguilar?
No, sir.
Okay. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, so who?
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Motion, second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Suarez, second by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Blanes, out of your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca. Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment. When he said Kevin.
Clay.
I mean Clay.
Clay, Lindsay, Clay, Lindsay.
I don't know what I get Kevin.
Clay and Lindsay.
Lindsay, Lindsay and Clay.
Exactly.
I know, but what he said...
I'll remind you, Commissioner.
I heard, you know, a couple of days ago, you know, in the week, two, three, four weeks ago, that the insurance is, was going 8% and 10% off, and we are lucky that we only get 5.7% off.
5.9%.
5.9%, so we have been doing a good job, I mean, and you, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You see, this is different. I mean, I was a little nervous in the beginning, because I've been dealing with the hurricane and all this, and now I'm relaxed after Commissioner Suarez and all his...
Yeah, because, you know, we have a nice, look at the nice people we have. Sometimes, you know, here comes, you know...
A comedy relief.
You know, people, and it's easy to have a conversation with you, understand your explanation, wonderful, very good.
All right.
Thank you for coming and being here.
Do you have something to say? Vice Mayor? Oh, I thought you were telling me.
Commissioner, may I have the floor again?
Yes.
Thank you, all right.
No, no. She was calling me. She was calling me for something.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, can we go back to the original order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Or any further suggestion?
No, Mr. Mayor, just go to proceed with item 4A, the submission of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2017-18 by city manager.
Madam Manager.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. All right, all right.
By the way, this is a good, I know we've been joking about it, but I would like to keep it brief tonight, so we can all attend to what is necessary to our family and preparation for the hurricane, so let's try not to be long-winded, let's try to stick to the point and discuss every single item from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. I have a tentative brief budget message dated August 30th, 2017. As you are aware, your budget was delivered to you last week in preparation for tonight. Since our preliminary submittal back in July, we have complied with all the statutory requirements pursuant to the TRIM calendar, which is a truth in millage, and that's governed by the Department of Revenue, an agency of the state of Florida. The property appraiser's office has sent out the notice of proposed taxes, and they have, in that notice, advertised our tentative public hearing for this evening, and so every property owner, commercial and residential, have been advised of this meeting. As you know, the city is not proposing an increase to the millage rate. We are recommending that you keep a millage rate which is flat and equal to last year. However, that is going to trigger a notice of tax increase add because assessed values have increased in the city of West Miami for last fiscal year. Remember that we're working now with the 2016 assessed values. The property appraiser has certified the rolls, and they have determined the amount of money that the city will be deriving based on the formula that is used, which is also a requirement of the statute, and that is the DR 420 form. I want to first and foremost thank every member of the City Commission who's taken the time during the summer months to sit down with our office, to ask questions, and become acquainted with the preliminary budget and now the tentative budget. So thank you all for your time, for your input, and for including all your projects into your wish list, and we hope we have addressed all of them in the budget. All changes in your budget book have been highlighted in yellow, and they are sitting in front of the preliminary pages submitted to you, so that you can have a point of reference, and you can easily point out those sections in the budget that contain increases. We've addressed vacancies, retirement liabilities, as I call them, call them areas of financial obligations that we have now or in the future, or sometime within the next fiscal year. We've introduced a wage plan, all corresponding benefits to include the recently approved renewal of our medical program. The only thing that we need to address, that I would like to recommend to the mayor and city commission that we need to address this evening, is the increase of, or the salary for the city attorney. And I know we've talked about that. I think it's something that you should openly discuss and give us some parameters, and if you want some recommendations, I'm also willing to give it to you upon your request. We've included numbers, again, for all of our insurances, not only the medical insurance, but our workers' compensation plan, all of our bonds for our bonded individuals or members of staff. We've increased retirement allocation slash contributions to coincide with the state mandated contribution at the, and payroll levels for all members of staff. We've met all the conditions of our contractual obligations with the Police Benevolent Association, and we've included all repayments for all of the city's debt services, every loan that the city has, either by way of vehicles, equipment, construction, everything is contemplated in the proposed budget for a revised general fund budget that totals $6,439,442. The city has amended the people transportation surtax revenue and expense details pursuant to the numbers provided to us by Miami-Dade County, and as illustrated by the attached exhibit on the projected revenues for each city in Miami-Dade County. As you know, these projections are prepared by the county based on the revenue that is expected from projected sales tax receipts. We have one pending issue, and you have been briefed on this, which is our appeal with a recent audit by Miami-Dade County on the city's use of the surtax dollars, and we are awaiting a review and a decision by Miami-Dade County, the Office of CITT, which is the office that enforces the use of the transit and transportation dollars allotted to our respective communities. The outcome of that audit is unknown and cannot be predicted at this time. If we were to have to fund every dime in that audit finding, we would probably have to be transferring $450,000, give or take, am I correct, Mrs. Leon, from your general fund reserves to the PTP. That is the worst-case scenario. We are appealing that decision. I believe we have made some real good progress in addressing those concerns that have been brought to our attention, and in the worst, in the worst-case scenario, we're looking at repaying our fund so that we can increase the level of reserves that they're indicating that we should have. Our auditors feel differently. We've met with the auditors, as you know, and this is the one ticket issue that remains unresolved at the time of submitting this budget, and it's outside of our control as to when we may expect a response. Again, I would like to avail myself to the mayor and city commission to discuss further any tentative submissions or any tentative revisions that are inclusive of this budget, because we still have one more go-around, and that is the final budget hearing, which we and you have scheduled for September 20th, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. The budget ads are scheduled to appear in the Miami Herald Neighbor section on Sunday, September 17th, 2017, and I will keep you posted on the Department of Revenue notifications in terms of agencies submitting their final budget to the property, the office of property appraiser and tax collector, and to the state of Florida. And this is because of the threat of the storm. So some dates may change. It all depends on a post-storm assessment, on whether we can meet the conditions of having having our final budget hearing on September 20th. So I will be in touch with you and provide you with enough notice in the event that something needs to change along the way. We are hopeful that we won't be too terribly affected and that that meeting can take place as scheduled, but that's, right now, it's up in the air. That concludes my presentation. I think we have debated and deliberated and discussed and talked about the budget plenty since May of this year, and we have incorporated savings to the tune of a quarter of a million dollars, which I think is an unprecedented amount of money that has not been done in the past, to try to start addressing our reserves that really need to be built up. And so I think we're doing a really good job, and you have a very sound budget, Mr. Mayor. And for that, I congratulate the Mayor and Vice Mayor and members of the City Commission.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay. At which point are we going to discuss the city attorney? Because I, actually, I have two items. One is the one that you mentioned, the city attorney's salary. Do we discuss it now, before we read the resolution, or?
This is your public hearing, Mr. Mayor? I don't, I think.
I have not opened the public hearing, so.
You have not. You may entertain it at the wish of this commission. I know I've had some input, but I think you all need to publicly, on the dais, agree to what you're going to do in setting those salaries, as you did for the clerk, for the manager, and those offices that respond under your jurisdiction, that fall under your jurisdiction.
So let's open the public hearing at this time? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
On a particular line, I don't know if it now is the right time, or do you want to take the attorney first?
I would like to take the attorney first and then go to the next item.
Perfect.
Madam Manager, like always, I mean, at least myself, I ask for your suggestion. I mean, after all, you, along with Mercedes Leon and the rest of the staff, are in charge of balancing the budget with, of course, our suggestion, but I would like to yield to you in terms of recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and I know that follows in with a conversation that we had earlier in preparation for this meeting. I have a recommendation, if you want to hear it now.
Please do.
In keeping with the same level of increases, and I wish we could give our employees and all of our professional services, and he's not an employee, he's a professional who renders a tremendous service to the city and protects the city like if it were his own, really. I want to say that I propose that we set the salary, or the retainer's salary of the city attorney, at $81,500. That represents a 4% increase, or a total of $3,374. That would be our recommendation, and it's somewhere in the middle of what has been discussed.
Okay. I would like to hear from the commission, any comments on that? Okay.
Question, how does that fall in line with the retainer that we have under legal service expenditures? You've got $2,000 in there.
Okay, that was a place marker that I entertained tonight, just to have an amount of money. I know we've talked about various amounts for the city attorney, and I, I'm not here to.
So this goes away?
I'm not here to, you know, my job is not to be gauging support, is to just identify with dollars and cents any potential financial responsibility that the city would have. Because this is something that is coming to the table, we have an account here that is basically an overtime account that we had in the budget in prior, that we have in the budget for code enforcement, which falls within the same division, that we can move over and transfer to cover the remaining $1,300 to cover for that.
Okay, that was my question, if that, because that didn't quite equal the amount that you just said.
Right.
So that, the rest is coming from, okay.
Right. The rest is coming from there, because we basically set aside those dollars in the event that we were going to pay out some overtime.
Now, I understand. Okay, perfect.
Motion, second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Can you call the vote on that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
May I be heard?
Yes.
I want to thank the commission and the mayor very much, and especially the manager for your recommendation, which I kindly undertake. Let me tell you what the city attorney have done for you, outside of the purview of my obligation, my regular obligation. We have collected this year, I believe, more than $250,000, Mr. Penna, in code enforcement.
Yes.
In addition, we did have a substantial litigation with Temple Beth that we forced the developer to pay, and it cost the city, I mean, it cost them over $50,000. I put about half of the work there. I collected nothing out of that amount that was paid. In addition, we had a contract with ATS on thousands of code enforcement, I'm sorry, red light commerce litigations, that I had devoted a lot of time for that, and we forced the company, ATS, to override their own contract, pay over $70,000 in attorney fees, for which I collected nothing of that. So, I just wanted to advise you that over and above the normal course of business, we have contributed or saved the city of West Miami with much more than normally would entail, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. The, I'll yield to your item, and then I'll leave mine for last.
Oh, okay, perfect. And Madam Manager, it just may be an omission, as you know, I was away all last week, so I just picked up my book from the police department just recently.
Okay.
So I didn't get a chance to actually look at a lot of it, but I noticed earlier this evening that under our commission tab, you said all the difference, all the, anything that was changed is highlighted. So on our, on page 27, summary of general fund expenditures, you've highlighted City Commission, but yet when I turn to the City Commission page, I don't see any highlights in there, so I don't know what that change was. I'm sure it was just an error that is not highlighted in my book?
The, there's actually the insurance.
I have nothing highlighted in my City Commission as to what the change was. So on the expenditure page, there is a highlight for City Commission, but yet in the City Commission tab.
The only item that I see is.
I have no highlights.
There's no highlight, but there's an increase in the insurance.
There's an increase in the medical and life insurance, because obviously, every department, we take the overall cost of the insurance, and we prorate it out to every division or department based on the number of employees, in this case, City Commission members that are eligible to participate in the program. Basically, what we do is we take the number of individuals and properly charge each department for their fair share of the insurance costs. Now, nothing has changed from the preliminary budget in this division, and I'm looking at Mrs. Leon. I know we had contemplated some changes. There is, with the exception of new dollars, you mean this year versus last year, is that what you're referring to, Madam Commissioner?
Probably. I just didn't see anything highlighted, so I wondered what the change was.
Okay. We have increased medical and life from $94,475 to $112,797.
Okay, I see that.
Because that is part of the overall increase that has been allocated for mayor and City Commission expenses.
Okay.
As it relates to insurance.
Okay.
Okay? Then the next item, and that is City Commission training. We have a line item of $4,000 this year that was not contemplated last year, but this was part of your preliminary budget. All these numbers were in your initial presentation. Then we have, we have, let me see what else we have, commission representation.
Everything else is the same.
Everything else remains the same, but these were all part of your preliminary numbers. Nothing has changed between July and September in these line items.
On that $4,000, how is that broken down? Is that going to be $4,000 for the total for the table, or?
That's just an amount of money that has been identified for potential training dollars, conference and trainings. There is no protocol or no policy for these, how to use these dollars.
Because I know most of us, we always had money left in our representation account, which is what we use for League of Cities, for, and I know there's a line item from Day Days, so I'm just wondering what this monies would be.
Those are new monies.
Right.
Those are new monies.
Can anyone explain to me what it will be for? I mean.
The, if you were to approve the budget as submitted, you would have to set some parameters, if that is your wish, on how to use those dollars, or what it qualifies under.
I'm just questioning why we're adding more money when we don't even use what we have? We haven't used what we have, so we gave back money.
Some commissioners do use their allocation.
May I interrupt?
Uh, go ahead.
May I explain to Commissioner Rodriguez?
Please.
Because commissioners, some commissioners in this table, and through the years, some commissioners, let's put it this way, some commissioners are more active than others.
Okay.
Some commissioners, they go to the Tallahassee, they go to many things, other commissioners, for whatever personal reasons are, they don't go, and they don't spend money in doing those things.
Okay.
But when you have to go to lobby from the city and see different institutions or different important powerhouses, I may say powerhouse, in Tallahassee, to get money for the city and to get programs, you have to travel, you have to go to Tallahassee.
Right.
You have to go to different activities, and that's the money for that. Because some, as I repeat, some commissioners, they do not spend the money, others do.
Okay.
That's why you see some commissioners do not spend. The commissioners who do not spend, that money goes back to the general fund.
Correct.
At the end of the year. So the money is in the city. But that other money is because, if necessary, to go to Orlando, to go to Tallahassee, to go to do things, that's the money is there for that.
Isn't Day Days part of our lobbying for Tallahassee, and that's already covered?
When Day Days, when you go to Day Days in Tallahassee.
We lobby.
You may, you may to do lobby. You may to call, do, make a lobby, because you go to see the governor, you go to see the Speaker of the House, you may, you go to senators, you go to see the state representatives, and talk to them, and make a relation with them to obtain benefits for the city. You may call that lobby, or you may call, put a relation for the city, you may call them different names, but that's, that's what everybody, all the cities do that.
Right.
Some cities don't do anything, and some cities do not get anything.
Correct.
That's the difference between the cities who do things and the cities who do not do things, and the commissioners and the mayors who do things, and the commissioners and the mayors who do not do things. And there is, there is, in England, there is a very common phrase, phrase in the Chamber of Commons.
I'm sorry, where, in England?
In England.
Okay, okay.
They call, do nothing politicians and do something politicians. Some politicians, they just sitting there and do nothing. Other politicians, they work and they do, and that's the difference. That's why the money is for, to do things and to work and to, if you had to go to see Marco Rubio in Washington, whatever is necessary, that is the reason for that money. It's not for parties.
Right.
It's for that money, if for a reason.
But these monies, according to our charter, we can't even spend these monies outside the state of Florida, based on our charter, so this $4,000, I'm just, I guess, curious, because we already go to Tallahassee to lobby, and I'm just wondering why we have to put another $4,000.
But sometimes, if you have to go to Tallahassee three or four times, with the $2,000 you have, you cannot have it, enough money, because if you go to here to the league, it's $50 each time you go.
Per meeting, per month, correct.
It's 12, 12 times.
Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt, that money has increased. It's no longer 50, it's actually more than, is it like 75 now, or?
Seventy five, $75.
For city meetings?
This meeting.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Is it for the meetings?
If you go 12 times, it's $600 that you spend that.
Can I say?
And then for the $2,000, for the $2,000, you have, you have to deduct $600, so only $1,400 is left.
Okay.
So sometimes you have, you spend more money than that, if you do things.
Correct.
If you don't do anything, you don't spend any money.
Well, I believe this whole table is very active as far as doing things for our city. None of us are sitting around doing nothing. We are all very active.
Well, I don't know, Commissioner Rodriguez, you said, if the money is not spent, it's because some people do, don't do anything.
Well, I'm not going to sit here and be quiet, because I know that I do take a lot of online courses that the Florida League of City offers, online for free, so to say that we don't do anything, that's not true. All of us do our fair share in bringing things for the benefit of our city.
Well, I tried to answer the best.
I'm speaking for me, and I'm speaking for the rest of the table.
I tried to answer the best way I can. If you want to understand.
And I appreciate that.
If you understand, if you want to, I don't want to discuss with you.
No, no, I appreciate what you're explaining.
If you don't want, if you don't want that money, because that, because anyway, if the money is allocated.
I simply want an explanation of the money.
One at a time, one at a time.
Can you finish?
Yes, of course.
If the money is allocated in the budget, and it's not spent, the money goes back to the general fund. So A, it's not any danger.
Of course.
That the money be allocated.
I understand.
So if you are worried about it's allocated, it's because you think it's going to be spent improperly. Normally, it never is spent improperly. If it's not spent, it goes back to the general fund, so you, you don't have to worry about that.
I'm not, I wasn't worried at all, I just wanted an explanation. I had no worry.
Well, I give you my best explanation I can.
And I truly appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, well, you got an explanation, but we have to, we have to make a decision.
Absolutely.
We have to make a decision, so it's up for discussion. We heard your opinion, we heard Commissioner Suarez's opinion. Anybody else wants to talk about the subject? Yes, Commissioner Blanes.
My colleagues, I happen to agree with Commissioner Suarez. It takes work, effort, time, to travel and lobby, and that's one thing that he does very well. I know that I don't do it, because I just don't have the time, but being represented in Tallahassee, especially, you know, in the efforts that Commissioner Suarez made to try to make sure that all the legislators up there know about the issues that we have with our water system, that we need to update it, upgrade it, you know, it takes time and effort. You know, if they keep seeing the commissioner, you know, it's going to remind them every single time, you know, I mean, unfortunately, that's how politics work. I wish I had the time to go and spend the time like he does, I just don't. We're not talking about a very big amount of money, at all whatsoever, and the fact that it's allocated, and the fact that if you don't use it, it goes back to the general fund. So I don't think we should be arguing about this. So I make a motion to have this item on the budget.
Okay.
Unless anybody else has something else.
Second.
Anybody, well, we have a motion on the table, so we have a first and a second. Can you call the vote?
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Is this motion for the entire budget, or just this item?
No, 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 this item.
Just for the $4,000 in training?
This, this just item.
Okay.
Just this item.
Okay.
The motion is to keep the $4,000 in the budget for training, the commission.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Suarez. On the motion, Commissioner Rodriguez, have you voted?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be sure that if this does pass, that there, we set some time aside for some protocol on how the money will be spent.
Okay.
That it has to come before the table, and that we all agree how much is going for each, each of us to represent our city. So if this passes, I'd like to have.
Don't we already have that?
There is, there is an amount that we put in the budget that we felt comfortable with in terms of, you know, possibilities for traveling within the state of Florida, for conferences, or meetings, or meeting with a delegation.
Yeah, but doesn't, I mean.
But you have to.
The motion on the table, a second.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Four one, item passes.
Thank you. Um, any other items? I would like to, um, this is not an item, this is a concern. Uh, the budget, uh, well, the tentative budget was issued prior to us hearing about the hurricane Irma. So, and I know, as a matter of fact, today, we, we talked about having issue with collecting back from, from FEMA and discrepancies and, and on and on and on. So shall we set aside some money, you know, in preparation, just in case, for, for, I mean, what will be the protocol? I mean, that was not contemplated in the budget before. We didn't discuss it. This budget was issued, you know, to us, uh, for review. Uh, and then all of a sudden, we, we have this hurricane. So I'm, I'm just bringing that to the table, so, um.
Great point.
Yes, to, to brainstorm.
Yes.
I know we still have time for the final budget, but, uh, it's, it's just, uh.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to address your concern, which is extremely valid, especially in, in light of what we're looking at. Um, your non-department, um, expense account, every year, we put in a small allocation in the amount of ten thousand dollars, which we call National Hurricane Reserves. In your budget, you will find the same allocation has been made, uh, and I'm trying to, okay, Hurricane National Disaster, we have ten thousand dollars in the budget. Let me explain to you, if I may, because I think this is really important and it goes to the heart of the budget. Once the governor of the state issues an emergency declaration, which Governor Scott has declared an, an emergency situation and has made a declaration, that means that the city can chart, that the government, the federal government re- will reimburse the city seventy-five percent of costs associated with some pre-storm preparations and most post-storm preparations for as long as they meet the public assistance guidelines that we receive from them. The twelve and a half percent match to that seventy-five percent comes from the state of Florida, from the FEMA state-funded agency. And the city has to foot the bill with a local match of twelve and a half percent. That's why this year, when we spoke before Mr. Orell's, uh, Orell's proposal, we didn't have enough money to go out and, and go crazy and get a, a sand truck and sandbags and water and ice and all these things that used to be reimbursed by FEMA in the past. It is no longer, it doesn't work that way. And I think that they, uh, changed the rules of the game and established some parameters and some policies and some protocols after Hurricane Andrew, because I believe that the, the, that some people took advantage, and I wanna leave it at that. Um, so the city will always have to look at a twelve and a half percent. Now, our, our eighty-seven and a half percent should cover most, and I wanna say a good ninety-five percent of the cost, because in the instance, and I'll give you a case in point example. In the instance of police vehicles, any pre-storm, um, police-related matter and post-storm police-related activity is funded through an allocation given pretty much like on a per diem basis. It basically goes to mileage on police vehicles. You, we are reimbursed for the vehicle that's on the road, uh, let's say at a, at a traffic intersection that is down, that's how we get our reimbursements. There's a particular formula that applies for us to get reimbursed. So I am comfortable that the ten thousand dollars would at least give us a few dollars to make emergency preparations to secure our facilities. We have some equipment costs that are associated with pre-storm and post-storm conditions. We have debris removal. We have to maintain, uh, I mean, I can, I can tell you that the next coming months are gonna be extremely grueling in terms of record-keeping here after the storm leaves. And I know Mr. Penna wants to add something to this, because we've already been not only involved directly with applying for public funds, we have been audited by FEMA in the past. And as a matter of fact, we, we still have one audit pending from one of the hurricanes, and I wanna say it's Wilma, or Hurricane Wilma is still being reviewed. Uh, I think it's about ten times that we've been audited on that, so.
Can I, can I interrupt for a sec?
I know, I know you wanna be brief, but.
No, 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 but it, it.
Thank you, hon.
No, 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 no.
Thank you, hon.
Very simple, very simple. I, I, listen, I'm a simple man, and I think most people understand simple language. I know you're talking about the whole process and all that, and it's good that you're putting that into the record and you talk about that, but to me, it's very, very simple. The, the word reimbursement means that I have to spend it.
You gotta ditch it out.
And the money has to come from here, and, and, and I'll give you a very, you know, the overtime of the police department, the overtime on the, uh, Public Works Department, all that time, and equipment, if we have to go out and get equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? You can't ask them to say, okay, work, and we'll pay you later when we get reimbursed.
Nope.
So that, that is my whole worry.
We're going to deplete, we're, we're gonna be depleting cash reserves with this storm, no question about it. But you have a budget that has a quarter of a million dollars in reserves. Our goal is to put it into savings. However, if we have a, the magnitude of a disaster of a Cat Five or Cat Form, uh, storm, you have some money in reserves that you can take from your new money for next year. You're still in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget. So whatever cash you use, or whatever, whatever, whatever expenses you have are going to be through September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Um, so you have to contemplate insurance, and, and I, I don't think we can co-mingle twenty sixteen, seventeen hurricane funds or expenses with the seventeen, eighteen. However, it will become a detrimental cash issue, no question about it.
Okay, but, uh, do we need to make changes in the budget?
I would recommend that you.
Or leave it, or leave it the way it is?
I would recommend for next year, you're putting away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus ten thousand dollars for National Hurricane Reserves. I think you're fine.
Okay. It was just a question.
I'm sorry, I got long-winded only because it is a very complex situation.
You know, everything has an account, and I just wanna make sure that if we need to tap into an account, for lack of a better word, that we are able to transfer monies to pay the police department, public works, equipment, et cetera, because we know that we're gonna get that money back, we're gonna get reimbursed, but it's gonna take some time.
Right.
And it's not fair to keep, to, to say.
But that, that becomes a cash issue. This is a, a, an outlook or a projection for next fiscal year, expenses and revenues.
As, as long as we have a way to do it, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, if, if the commission is. Okay? So that's all, that's all I have. Any other items? And by the way, I lost a little bit of track. Uh, I, I think I did not close the public hearing, and I don't know what's the proper protocol here, so, uh, so can somebody help me? City attorney, city clerk?
Do you have anybody registered from the public?
Mayor, we are still, no, no, nobody has registered for the public hearing. We are still on item, uh, four A. After the submission of the city manager, you've expressed your concerns and, and your questions, and we are still on that. We haven't, uh, read the resolution item for B yet.
Okay, so should I close the public hearing and then continue, or, or do we leave it open? I mean, I'm sorry, we do this, uh, once a year, and I forget.
You close the public hearing, and then you, uh, take it back to the table and.
Okay.
And you decide what is it that you wanna do.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions from the public? Okay? Close the public hearing, back to the table. Can you read resolution, item B?
Yes, for B, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, establishing the two thousand and seventeen tentative mileage rate upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payments of the amount appropriated in the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen tentative budget by mayor and city commission.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, um, a question is to the city manager. This is the same rate as the last year, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, make a motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item will be, uh, item, item eleven C, which is the public hearing, which you, you, which you, uh, already opened and closed. Item four D, this is a resolution adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Mayor and city commission.
Okay. Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item E?
Item E, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the tentative water enterprise fund budget for the year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, in the sum of eight hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred, ten dollars and zero cents by mayor and city commission.
Mayor, you have a question?
Yes.
This question is to the manager.
Yes, sir.
This is the same, uh, rate of the last year, right?
Yes. Nothing has changed.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Item H?
Item H, this is a request for proclamation declaring September as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This is, this item is sponsored by Mayor Mujina.
Can you also read item I, and then I would like for the manager to clarify these two items?
Okay, item I, request for proclamation declaring September as Blood Cancer Awareness Month. This, uh, item is also sponsored by Mayor Mujina.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and these, uh, these requests for pro- proclamations have been emails directed to you from organizations that are, uh, basically creating awareness, raising funds. Uh, the first one would be as, uh, a, an awareness campaign to, um, so that the nation embraces awareness on, on the high rates of childhood cancer. I think that speaks volumes, and I recommend that, that you all approve a proclamation as requested. And the other one is a, uh, the month of September is usually known as the Blood Cancer Awareness Month. And usually, you have blood drives and you have different community events that support the cause, and obviously, any research money, any awareness programs or campaigns to create an awareness on, on the dangers of cancer and wellness and prevention that we can obviously learn from, it's, it's a good cause, so I would encourage you to adopt them.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Of both, of both proclamations.
For both proclamations. By the way, this, we're gonna be, uh, upon approval, presented tomorrow night, but as you all know, the, the league has suspended the, uh, the dinner for tomorrow due to the hurricane.
The day after tomorrow.
So we, we will follow whatever protocol, either present it at the next, uh, uh, dinner or, or forward them, uh, as, uh, so Madam Clerk, can you find out what will be the procedure now? We, we were planning to present it at the, uh, at the dinner tomorrow night that has been suspended, so can you find out?
Yes, we'll contact the Miami Tech County League of Cities, and, and you'll present it, I guess, uh, at the next, uh, at the next meeting.
Whatever, whatever they prefer, because this is for the month of September.
Okay.
And the next, uh, meeting will be in the following month, will be October.
Should I read the next item, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Item J, all business, this is an all-business agenda item. This is a request by Commissioner Juan Blanes to discuss the street signs as approved by the mayor and city commission at the August sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen city commission meeting by Commissioner Blanes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Well, I don't know how I'm gonna tackle this. Irma has taken all the wind from my sails on this one here. I was going to propose funding this project, um, you know, the whole city. Um, I don't know, um, how much money it would take, but, um, I just thought that, you know, it would be something that we would do for our residents. Since we haven't really given to our residents, uh, anything extra. We've given them a good government. We have not raised, uh, the mileage taxes in how many years, Madam Manager?
I would, I wanna say at least the last decade.
The last, that's incredible. We have not raised taxes the last decade. And we have had, um, projects and programs and services for our community, um, you know, uh, better than most other cities. I think that we've done an incredible job, but I, I, I believe that that's par for the course. I don't think that we've given our residents anything extra. That's what we're supposed to be doing to begin with. That's why we sit here. So we're doing a good job, but we have not done, um, anything extra for our residents. And I was just thinking.
You have one.
That, you know, we could fund this and get it done, because, you know, we're always, uh, you know, we weren't sure how to tackle this. We're gonna do it by section. We're gonna do fifty of them and see how it goes, uh, but why not just do them all? You know, there's an old saying that says that such is the nature of men. Anything that causes distinction will cause rivalry. When you distinct yourself and others see it, then they want it. And that's something that we haven't done for our city. Again, our city, you know, like realtors say, you know, location, location, location. We really don't have to advertise too much, but I believe that if we do this, you know, it's, it's gonna go a long ways. It's going to make people wanna come and live here even more. It's gonna wanna make businesses come here even more. I remember the developer, one of the developers, uh, speaking about the development, uh, spectacular developments, and he was, he said something that I'll, I'll never forget. He said something in the, to the tune of that they spent an incredible amount of money in landscaping, because they wanted people to come and see it and say, I'm here, I've arrived. I've made it. You know? So, you know, we have a great product, um, but, you know, we need to window dress our, our products. We haven't done that. I don't think we've, I don't know how old those signs are.
Very old.
Maybe fifty years? Fifty years?
At least.
At least? Not more? So, I mean, I, I, I don't know how much it would take. Um, Mr. Penna, can you give us a ballpark figure or something that we can, uh, analyze or discuss or?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I just emailed you or text you the picture of the one that we did across the street. The, um.
I've seen it. It's beautiful.
The signs are labor-intensive, because we only have two molds. So, and one, only one of the molds was altered to do the, the sign that you see presently. The other one is still in its original form, so we would have to alter the other one, which costs about two hundred and fifty bucks. The seals, we've already, were able to purchase and locate. And we have stock of what, letters and blue material that we use. However, because we're not moved into our new building, that's all in a container. So, I couldn't tell you exactly what quantities we have. And before we start redoing all the markers, There are some that we redid when 57th Avenue was redone, That we could still use those plates over again. The only difference is, we would have to pour a new concrete stand for it. So... I know we wanna go real quick and do them all. I took a rough estimate, and we have somewhere around 240 of those markers out there. With two molds, we're able to do eight a week at most. Because you gotta give the concrete time to cure, And take them apart, paint them, and so on. So, if you want an exact figure of what that would cost, I mean, we would have to dedicate an employee to it In order to be able to do that on a daily basis. And we could put a figure to that, but right now, with the conditions that we're in, We don't really have the mobility to be doing them on a production line basis.
I realize that. Well, may I suggest?
Can I interrupt you for a second there? Okay. I just did the math. And about 248 a week, that's about, that will take about 30 weeks. So, that's... So, I understand what you're saying about the... I mean, the good thing is, yeah, we're saving money, we're doing it in-house, But it will not have the impact, because it will take a long time to do it. That's your concern, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, you know, what I was gonna suggest is, we definitely need more molds. Okay? So, maybe, you said you have two?
We have the two original molds. We had one retrofitted, but we would, if we go into a production line, We would have to fabricate more molds.
So, at least, I think we should have 10. Would you say 10 would be a good number of molds? I mean...
You're only gonna use them this once. And then they're just gonna sit there like these have sat for 40 years. We use them sparingly.
Well, that's what it costs. That's the cost of doing this, I mean... I mean...
May I make a comment?
And, but I've not done. And the other thing I was gonna suggest is hiring a part-time person That can come in and do this work on a part-time basis. I mean, just for the project. Once the project is done, then that's it.
But again, Commissioner, as I explained, it has its intricacies. So, you just can't hire somebody off the street and say, "Do me these things." We have to use someone that's in-house, that's already done them before. Because you gotta be able to take the molds in a certain way apart. You gotta be able to...
We can hire a part-time worker to fill in for that particular individual, that's the expert, And have this person that's the expert do this. You know, with 10 molds, and, you know, how long would that take with 10 molds, Mr. Mayor?
Seven months. Seven months. Seven months.
You said 240, right?
Approximately.
Divided by... No, but that's 10, no, that's...
That would be 40 a week. That would be 40 a week with 10 molds.
Forty a week? Okay, so that's...
Six weeks.
That's, see, that's, that would be, that would be good. Like I say, you know, we haven't done this in a long time. I believe that that's gonna give the city, you know, a distinct, a distinction, you know? It's gonna instill pride in our employees, you know, in our residents. Like I say, anything that causes distinction and is different, people don't have it, then they want it. And I think it's gonna help us. It's gonna help us in ways that we can even imagine.
May I make a comment?
Ask the mayor.
No, no.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a comment. How long you said, six months?
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
Oh, six weeks. Well, let me tell you something. Because if you... I drive all over the county. And many cities are changing their signs. I told you, right? South Miami, they make it with the seal, South Miami. The friendly city or something like that. Beautiful. And Pinecrest, they did. Pinecrest did, if the former mayor. Even they changed it like Rebecca Sosa did here in 16th Avenue and 67th Avenue. 16th Street and 67th. You know what the light is? A larger sign? This is a trend, to change the signs. And in Pinecrest, in South Miami, in many cities, they change the sign. And let me tell you, this change of signs with the seal, like it is right there, I think if we're making those buildings, the cities change the face. The cities change the, no, the character. The character is nice, we keep the character. Because the buildings are very nice. But if we enhance the city, those new signs with the seal are nice. Something that the people knows that West Miami is doing something from the ground to the eighth floor.
I should have pinned the idea.
It's a nice idea. I think, I think, I think it's something for the public, And everybody sees something for themselves.
This is something that is...
When the residents drive around, they see, they see a difference. Not only the building, they see in the street, the new sign, and it's something for them. So, I think, I think so.
Can I, let's hear from everybody.
I just wanna put in perspective everything I'm hearing. Mr. Mayor, you're saying that this project will take six weeks to complete?
At 40 a week.
Well, that's...
At 40 a week, yes.
Six weeks? And we've been waiting, what, 40 years? Well, however, I don't see the urgency in spending more money to get this done in a shorter period of time. We're good, we're not debating whether we're going to get them or not, because we are. We are gonna get our street signs. But I can't consciously sit here and say, "I wanna spend more money to get it done faster than six weeks." Six weeks is gonna fly by. We have, you know, I mean...
Once it's done, it's done.
It's done, it'll be done in six weeks. Without spending extra money.
I don't think, it was six weeks. I think it was 40 weeks.
Yeah, 30 weeks originally, at 4 weeks.
30 weeks. So, be 30...
I mean, good things come to those who wait, so...
How long?
Seven months.
You know what?
30 weeks?
Seven months.
Seven months.
You know what? We haven't given anything to the residents.
They're, they're, they're disagreeing. They're disagreeing. So, let's not get into that subject.
Like I stated, we have programs, we have projects, we have good government, we haven't raised taxes. You know what? But that's what we should be doing to begin with. We have not given the residents anything extra. We have not done for this city anything more than the par, okay? And I'm thinking, you know, why not do this? Why not? Should we wait more? How long more are we gonna wait? I think it'd be great if, you know, half the city would be done by Christmas, And then at the beginning of the year, the other half. You know, that's progress. That's a noticeable progress. That would make, you know, everybody proud to live here. I know it definitely make me proud to live here. Why should I have to wait? I pay taxes. I pay fees. You know, I'm sure that just about every single resident that's listening to this Or would be here, would be in agreement. We haven't given them anything. Extra. And this is some, actually, this would be something that we would be giving ourselves. And like I say, it's got benefits that are intangible, that we don't even see yet. Now, I know that people don't have the same vision. I know that people got different ideas. But we spent money addressing many, many things. Last budget, this budget. The will was there to address this, and address this, and address this. We just addressed the city attorney. We just addressed the commission. What about the residents?
I agree.
What about the resi... How much is this gonna cost?
Let me tell you.
Why do we do, I mean, we can, okay, listen. Can I propose something? We can... This is not about...
The manager's been dying to say something.
Yeah, but we're not about...
I have a question.
Before the manager goes, okay, okay. Here, we can talk about this all night. You know, you can say one thing, I can say another one, you can say, you know, whatever. But we need to follow some protocol. So... I agree with you, in terms of image. I agree with you in terms of it should be done, you know, quickly and so on. But first, we have to come up with the money, okay? A budget, okay? Then we need to discuss it. Then, if we're gonna hire somebody, we need to talk to the city attorney, Because it might need to go out to bid, et cetera. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to. So, we have to agree on something. As far as the image, you got my vote. As far as doing it fast, you have, you know, other people might think otherwise. Again, let's go back for a moment. You know, we have a hurricane coming. So, I think we...
I read an email from the manager
Okay.
That she have a vendor that forgot. There is an email here?
No, that was for the seal. That was for the seal, sir. That was to make the seal.
Oh, the seal, oh, I'm sorry.
The seal. We already ordered, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we already, sorry. We already ordered our first order of seals, or ability to do the die, to do the round seal. We ordered enough for 250, which I think will probably cover the bulk Of the street signs pursuant to what Mr. Penna just reported a few minutes ago.
Half.
Half.
Takes two per side.
Oh, that's right, they're two-sided street markers. I apologize for that. Okay, so, half of the city. Now, my question is, if I may ask, Mr. Penna, Fast-tracking this, and let's be realistic, we're not gonna finish this in six weeks. And I'll be very frank with you, after the storm hits, we have to make an assessment of damages. Let's, and believe me, Mr. Blanes, with all due respect, I know that sometimes we don't see eye to eye, But I completely and wholeheartedly support your initiative. I think it's going to give the city character, and we discussed it. And the minute we discussed it, it was on the agenda at your request. And we will, you know, put our money where our mouth is. But let's just be a little bit more realistic. We have a storm in a couple of days, that we don't know what its impact to our area is going to be. So, let's be realistic. In the best-case scenario, we could probably start this work December 1st.
The final, may I say that my final thing?
Wait, 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 Madam, let's, one at a time. No, Madam, she's not finished, she's not done.
No, no, sir, but I will...
Yeah, go ahead, Madam Manager.
Reserve, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what I would like to know is, if we have a ballpark idea Of how many employees you need to devote to fast-tracking this effort, If we are comfortable before September 20th, That we've included enough money in the budget to cover this item, that would be number one. Maybe it's something that we can cover using surtax dollars, Mr. Penna, Because it is a transportation transit-related, That we could conceivably allocate some dollars from that fund to this effort. And how many employees we're gonna need? You're gonna need one guy full-time at the shop to fast-track the project, And another body in the street actually doing the physical work. So, for a period of, I wanna say, eight weeks and not six, And more realistically, even if you fast-track it, 10 weeks. You have to provide for inclement weather. There will be days where you will not be out there, because it's gonna rain. And there will be holidays, and there will be other delays. So, I want to be the person that, you know, unfortunately, you pay me to be your, you know, Your check and balance, if you wanna call it. But I see this more as a 10-week project, even if we fast-track it, which I think is great. We need to know, if you have a ballpark figure, doing it in-house Versus going to a vendor, like Commissioner Suarez mentioned, Obviously, we know that there are people out there that are willing to do the work for the city. Have we considered, have we considered what the cost is?
No one.
My final, let me, my final. I recommend you go to South Miami and drive, and look the sign. Because in the beginning, when I heard about this, I said, "Well, what is that?" But once I saw in the corner, the sample that you make there, And I drive through Miami, South Miami, and I saw...
Makes a difference.
But Commissioner, I don't think that the issue is that. I mean, I think we're all in agreement. We're all in agreement, I think it will improve the image and so on. Why don't we do the following?
The issue is, the issue is, South Miami and Pinecrest Were able to go to a private vendor, because they're not street markers, they are street signs. They make bulk for many cities. This is a very particular sign. Aside from ourselves, and the City of Corvus, they use something similar. There's only, there's not gonna be a vendor out there that's gonna make my molds And build these concrete markers.
Penna, but South Miami is on the ground too, that's what I mean. I saw in the ground.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. Madam Manager, I agree with you 100%. And I realize everything that you just said. But, you know, if we, and I understand, you know, with this hurricane, with this storm coming, We're just gonna have to just wait and see what happens. But, you know, if someone doesn't stand up for this, and, you know, you gotta shoot for the stars. You know, if you miss, you land on the moon. You know, maybe not six weeks, maybe not eight weeks, but maybe, you know, maybe 20 weeks. But, you know, I would love to see this get done. And get done within a reasonable amount of time.
You have our commitment. Now, if you would allow us to go back and crunch some numbers...
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait to see what's gonna happen.
Please, allow us the time to crunch some numbers, to tell you whether we can do it in-house And meet your desired deadlines, or if we should contract the services out, How long that would take, if there is a readily available vendor out there.
I'm not set, you know, it's not carved down stone that's gotta be 10 weeks, 15 weeks, 20 weeks.
I understand. Soon.
But...
Get it done.
What I would like to see is, yes, it's the project started.
And we are committed to that.
And, you know, if it takes longer, it takes longer. But I would like to see someone assigned to it, someone doing it, And I would love to see progress every week.
I couldn't agree with you more, and it will be done from our end. We will work expeditiously. Give us a chance to see what we have before us in the next few days, Make an assessment, and see where we go from there. This, if you would like, we can bring it back on the agenda under All Business On September 20th with a follow-up.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go to the order.
One thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to thank my colleague, Commissioner Suarez, For his gracious explanation to that line item that had questions on. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I have one thing. Be safe. Like I said, prepare for the worst, and let's hope nothing happens. So... Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just going to ask the Chief of Police, if you need a voluntary, Mr. Blanes, you ready to?
I'll be out there in my scooter.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Mrs. Attorney?
Yes, the manager has received a letter by an attorney That has claimed certain damages caused by a tree at 90, I'm sorry, at 901 Southwest 62nd Avenue.
No, at 6386 Southwest 10th Street.
63?
86 Southwest 10th Street.
Okay. Now, allegedly caused by a tree, the legal cities is handling this issue. We just a few minutes ago conversed with...
Clay Austin, the Director of Trust Services for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust.
Okay. At this time, this attorney is requesting not to take down the tree, But simply trimming the foliage and some limbs that might cause Would prevent additional damage to the property And to prevent any injury to the particular person. This is something that I understand pursuant to the managers that have been done in other areas. So, we wanted to bring this to your attention. I cannot discuss the nature of the claim, because obvious reasons. This might be something that might be settled or go to court. But nevertheless, I thought it would be prudent for us to advise you of this.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, hold on a second. Are you, is this a report, or this is a...
This is it.
What is it you said?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address to the commission, to the full commission, please.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, give, give us a, a couple of minutes, please. I'm, I'm a little confused. Is, is this a report? Is, is, is this a report, is this a... Are you asking us?
I'm, I'm telling you, uh, what the manager had been advised. And, uh, the manager is simply being asked to, uh, trim the foliage and some roots, I'm sorry, some limbs that might pose a, uh, a health issue to the citizen that lives there.
Okay, uh, is that a, is that a, a life safety issue, is, are we talking about some-
Allegedly, it's a life safety issue, yes, sir.
Okay, um-
I'm confused. You're telling us because you're going to do this, or you're asking, you're asking us for our opinion? Or you're just telling us this?
I'm telling you.
That you, you-
Correct.
Okay. You're telling us that you're going to do this?
That is correct.
Perfect.
Mr.-
I'm confused. I'm confused.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission-
In my opinion, this is not for me, as a legislature. This is for administration. The tree, probably in the property, is administration, it's not the legislation.
I agree.
May I go? Because I have nothing to do with that case.
Well, we're not done yet. Let's, let's be done.
We brought it to our attention for a reason.
Let's be done. What, what-
He just told, he, he's telling us a letter that mana- the manager received. That's it. I understood that, right? Did you just make a comment?
I'm not the one that, uh, supposed to, uh, tell you to leave or not to leave, Mr. Good.
No, you told us a letter that the manager received in reference to that tree and that property.
Correct.
And we should not discuss anything. So, that's, that's administration. It's not the commission.
Okay, but don't tell me, I mean, you wanna leave?
Yeah, yeah, because basically, the question is very simple. Are you looking for, in the beginning of the statement, you said that we should not discuss it, so if we should not discuss it, uh-
I am advising you of the letter, and I'm advising you of the action of, by the city manager in this particular case. Period.
Okay?
And this letter is from the attorney, the litigating attorney with this issue.
Yes.
Yes.
So, we gotta do whatever they say. They're litigating it, right? They're responsible, so, right?
Correct.
But I, what's the action? That was not said. What's the a- what is the action? I need to know what, this was brought to our attention, so what is the action that's going to take place?
The action that, uh, we're being requested is to trim the foliage and to trim some of the limbs, as we have done in other cases in the past.
Okay, so you're saying, is requested, are we going to proceed with the request?
I, I, I'm not a legal, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I just want to make sure that this doesn't set a precedence. Set a precedent for anybody calling an attorney to write a letter so they can trim the tree. I, I, I just want to, you know, put that into a record, you know? Okay? Okay?
The city manager, I believe, had something to say.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you. The letter was issued by the attorney on behalf of a citizen of the city of West Miami because, and, and we cannot talk about any potential litigation that may or may not exist at this time. But we can tell you that the attorney has put the city on notice that there is a request due to a pending storm. Um, that the city remove the foliage and some of the limbs and do not touch the tree trunk. We did something similar along 63rd Avenue, but, uh, under a different set of circumstances. Mr. Penn, am I correct? That is a homeowner applied for tree removal permit that has nothing to do with a hurricane.
Of an invasive species of a plant. An invasive species that Miami-Dade County does not allow.
Exactly. The circumstances were different.
Completely.
This is a matter as a result of what may or may not wind up to be a legal issue that we cannot discuss with you. However, this attorney is putting the city on notice that in order to protect life and property of his client, that the cit- he's requesting or demanding that the city trim the tree prior to the arrival of the storm, enough where the foliage and some of the limbs can be reduced and do nothing else with the tree trunk itself.
And the intent is to advise you, period.
That's it.
I would say that, I would say that that applies in hundreds of places here in the city of West Miami. So, why are we going to do it there and not in a hundred other? And this attorney, is he an expert? Is he an arborist? Is he a storm specialist, uh, hurricane, uh, PhD, you know?
Commissioner, 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 okay, very simple. This is very simple. Are you attorney? Am I attorney?
No.
No, we're not. Okay. So, on the legal advice, if that's the procedure that we should follow?
I believe, I believe so, sir.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Wait, 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 it's not that it's simple.
It's not for us to decide?
I, well, it's for the manager to decide where the allocation for the funding of this is coming from, because our bucket truck is not here. Our bucket truck is being repaired. So, if we're going to trim a tree tomorrow, we need to have-
Contract services out.
Contract the service out. And what stops us at two trees or 50 trees?
Is this tree in danger of falling?
Not that I know of.
I'm more confused now than when we started. I, I really am. But that's just me.
Guys, it's very simple. It's very simple. We either ratify, we follow up buys by legal counsel, and it's, it's not for us to analyze it or discuss it, or it's very simple, you know, is, you know, we have been informed. Uh, I mean, we don't, we don't allocate the budget, I mean, the money's in the budget either. I mean, uh, so, and I, I'm sorry, I, so, I mean-
The, uh, one thing I just want to be clear on. This attorney that represents this resident wrote the letter.
Yes, sir.
And there's another attorney, the League of Cities attorney, that recommended that such, such action take place?
There is no, go ahead, go ahead.
We have not received a response from the League of Cities to this letter.
Okay, so then we can't do anything?
This was forwarded to the League of Cities?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm, I'm, legally, I'm a layperson, but, you know, if, if, if you take this action, then, you know what, I'm gonna find an attorney and I'm gonna have them write a letter, and you're gonna have to cut the trees around my house too. And then somebody else is gonna do it, and somebody else is gonna do it, and somebody else is gonna do it. You're gonna open up a can of worms. You know, now, if the League of Cities attorney that is, is litigating this case, if he says, "Yes, do it,"
We don't have a written response yet.
Okay, well, then, you know what, then, don't ask me, I'm not a legal expert. That's why he sits there, and that's why he should be making that decision. Actually, quite frankly, I don't know why the heck he had to mention anything to us. And I agree with Commissioner Suarez, I want to leave.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'm gonna always follow the, the lead of my attorney. He's there to protect us, so if the attorney is telling us that this is what he's going to do, then that's what he's going to do.
I, I agree.
I think this is gonna open up a can of worms, and we will, and we will regret this.
Our attorney is here to protect us.
Okay?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.